States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two regularly scheduled selectmen's meeting. Tonight, we're going to start with municipal officers workshop, business and public hearings. First of which being for a license for William M. Hobbs, DBA Hobbs Harperside, three fifty-two Harbor Road Wells. Application for a full-time malt, wine and spirits liquor license. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this license at this time?
I move to close the hearing, public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor, five zero, thank you. Next, we will move on to Deborah L. Leach, DBA Richards Takeout, seventeen thirty-two North Burke Road Wells. Application for a full-time malt and wine liquor license. Anybody from the public seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
All those in favor, five zero. Next, we have Sea Glass Village Homeowners Association, DBA Sea Glass Village Homeowners Association. One Old County Road Wells, application for a full-time malt, wine and spirits liquor license. Anyone from the public seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor, five zero. Next, we have Sea Glass Village Homeowners Association, DBA Sea Glass Village Homeowners Association. One Old County Road Wells, application for a special entertainment permit. Anyone from the public seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
All those in favor, five zero. Next, we will move on to the town manager's report, Bill.
No report tonight.
No report tonight, didn't do your homework or just nothing to report?
She she didn't show up.
Oh, all right. So for the first time this evening, we will move on to open to the public. There's ten minutes set aside for folks from the public to, you know, address the board. We ask that members of the public keep it to three minutes. In that time, so everybody has a chance to speak. Anybody from the public like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to current agenda items. The first of which is a review and action on accounts payable and payroll warrants. Any discussion?
I move to approve and sign the accounts payable warrant dated September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the amount of eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. And the general assistance warrant dated September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the amount of two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents.
All those in favor, five zero, thank you. Next, we have update, discussion and action on committees, projects, issues, purchases and personnel. First being an FY two thousand and twenty-two fourth quarter financial report, Jody.
Good evening, so just reporting on fourth quarter. We finished period thirteen with our second warrant in August, so we figured it would be good time to get it out to you. We finished the fourth quarter with an increase in our general fund balance of eight million, five hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Most of that is because the second installment of taxes came due in that quarter. Our accounts receivable you'll see is higher. That is due to booking accounts receivable at year end that we know we're going to get, but the payments don't come to us until July or August, such as the cable TV franchise for fourth quarter. Decreases or increases in special revenues or capital reserves. We had big changes in mooring CIP. We did service on the timber floats. Harbor Park General, we brought in revenue for the concerts and for rentals down there at the harbor. Beach erosion, we started to take collection from the meters. A portion of the meter rental goes into beach erosion. So you'll also see the beach enterprise enterprises up. Mooring revenues came in for slips, mooring renewals and things like that. We also did paving, so we decreased in paving. There was a lot of work done in fourth quarter, springtime, so Carol's busy doing paving. We also started on spending out of the infrastructure bond for engineering on Pine Legend Robinson. And let's see, enterprise recreation is up and beach enterprise is up. And tax receivable decreased, like I said, because of the second installment in payments. And then I did hit on, we finished year end for revenue collections at about ninety-seven point eight percent. So almost at a hundred, we neither are at a hundred, so that's pretty good. We did have some departments that were significantly below the expected one hundred. Let's see, they were selectmen, EMA. Oh, that was for expenses, EMA, cable TV studio, animal control and warrant articles. Those were all not expended at a hundred percent. And then the town manager, we did have, so for overall collections and expenses, we did have budgets that ran over. So town manager, a lot of it was in legal. We ran over in human resources. That was the shift that we all know about. General Government Conservation Commission, Public Safety Facility. Transfer station was okay. I'm trying to think, and insurance was a little over, so. But overall, we finished above and on track like we normally do. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Any questions from the board for Jody? Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
So next, we'll move on to a discussion and action on fire department bid to replace utility nine pickup truck is approved through the FY two thousand and twenty-three budget process. Chief DeBooy.
Good afternoon, yes, so I I come to you today with, since we had talked about in the budget getting a new pickup truck. I had very, a lot of difficulty getting quotes to do this pro, to do this, to get even get a truck. I went through Sourcewell, they can't get any trucks. Nobody could give me any, any information, so I had to start looking at dealerships on my own. So I went to three or four dealerships, and I have three of them listed here. I went to Dover Chevrolet to see if they could get us a, the Chevy pickup truck, that's what we were looking for, gas powered, crew cab, three-five-hundred, based on what the previous chief had been trying to get. So we went through that. Dover didn't have what we were looking for, wasn't really willing to build me a truck. Told me that they had one, a diesel, that was going to cost me ten thousand dollars more. And on top of that, they wanted to charge me another two thousand dollars because that's the market. So that truck would have come in at seventy thousand, two hundred and four dollars. I went to Jack Chevrolet in Saco, Maine. They didn't have anything in in stock and wasn't willing to do any purchase, any building on it. They didn't feel necessary, didn't have anything there, so I got no price from them and no cooperation. Hilltop Chevrolet in Somersworth, I was able to talk to them. They were able to build me a truck on the phone, told me it would be available in January. Told me what the price was going to be, it was going to be sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty, manufactured suggested retail price. And he got me a fleet reduction and a state of Maine reduction that brought it down fifty-five thousand dollars and six, excuse me, fifty-five thousand, six dollars for the same truck. So I'm bringing this forward to you to see if you would honor that or if you want further information to go, to go with this. We had budgeted for eighty thousand for this truck, and the reason being was to outfit it with radios and emergency lighting was going to cost us, I have an estimate of nine thousand, six hundred dollars. And we wanted to put a utility body on the back so that we have cabinet space and ability to use much more of the truck space for its use. And that was going to be eleven thousand, so that still gives me a total of about seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. So I'd still be under the eighty thousand we needed. Any questions?
Is there any value to the trade-in?
I haven't given that any value, I haven't looked at that, what that trade-in was worth. I know that it didn't pass inspection last year, we had to get it patched. So I can still do that and find out what that would be. And I would assume that that would come off, some of that would come off the value of the vehicle. But I can't be sure, because of the way the economy is now, if they're doing that. Because like I said, I had two, I had many of the dealerships have, they just have no interest in reducing any prices on anything. So I was shocked to get something from Hilltop. But I will certainly ask, I know Ron Curry, the owner personally, and I think that might have helped in getting this through because I was able to get trucks through bid through Rochester Fire Department when I was there. So I don't know if that's part of it or if it's just the way he does business, but either way, I'm happy that he's working with us, so. I can certainly look into that.
No, I'm just curious if you had any thoughts of what you're going to do with it.
The other thing was, there was a, there was a request from Mike York. He had considered or asked if we could hand it to him if he, if he needed it. I've asked him if he wanted it, and he said he would get back in touch with me. We had time to talk about it, so that was one of the main reasons why I didn't get a trade-in value because I thought it might be staying in-house, but I did tell him the concerns that I had with it because of the body rot.
Which truck is this?
This is utility nine for us, it's the, it's one of the two pickups we have, the other pickup is the brush truck.
Is this the four-door with the six-four diesel in it, the Ford?
Yes.
Yeah, that motor's been problematic, hasn't it?
I haven't had any problems with it since I've been here, but there has been approximately, let's see. I spent, it's been in the shop for three hundred and fifty hours and twenty thousand dollars has been spent on that truck in maintenance since we've had it. So I don't know if there's more than that or not, but.
I think that truck's a liability. Those motors were a ticking time bomb, they were notoriously unreliable.
Yep.
They don't do well with the emission system. I would say offload it if we could.
Okay.
It's my opinion.
He knows more than I do, Bob.
I'm always cautious because next thing you know, then they want to replace that one, which Robert replaced.
Yeah, I know, that's one.
The issue with the six-four diesel is when Ford manufactured, they took an international block and they put their top end on it, and the head studs weren't tall enough, so it had head gasket issues, but they also had twin turbos. The turbos, they had issues, and then they had, it was a first generation regen system that didn't have the blue fluid. If you didn't take the truck out and run it around, it would clog up and then you'd have issues there. So the EGR also had issues. The only way to make them reliable was to delete them, which is obviously illegal, so. I would say get rid of it before it costs us a lot of money. And if it had body rot.
I'm here to do what you guys want, so I just wanted to make sure that you understood all the, all the aspects of it.
Yep.
I, I'm used to, I'd prefer that you approve eighty thousand because when he starts having these modifications made, you know, you don't want to be two dollars short, so the budget was eighty thousand, right?
Correct, but it was for the full project, right?
Yeah. When he gets the utility body, the radios, the lights, the painting done on it.
Right, because that was another twenty thousand, eight twenty-six, and I was just going to ask, you want to just round it up to twenty-five thousand? Because that would have been what it would be.
Well, I would, I would, the, the project was eighty thousand.
Right, but fifty, it said, we had, separate here that we, the bid to Hill Chevrolet.
So round to twenty-five.
Right, okay, twenty-five.
That would be my preference.
Is that okay with everybody else if I make that motion?
And then, you know, if we don't trade the truck, if we end up moving it to, to the waterfront, to the harbor, then I'll report back to you if it does, or do you want, you don't want that?
I, I think.
I'm not even sure Mike wants it anymore, I'm not sure, I just.
Well, after what he just said, he probably doesn't.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, I just, I told him that we had lots of time because it was going to be until January roughly that when we get the truck.
And it sounds like a no, so let's not do that.
Well, and just, I mean, as an aside, what, did they express why they wanted it, Mike wanted it down there?
He wanted a, a more heavy-duty truck. I think the truck that he was getting or renting, or excuse me, leasing, but I don't want to speak out of turn, so I'm not exactly sure. It's something to the effect that he wanted it because it was a much more rugged truck.
I think we, I would suspect, and again, just my two cents, the highway department has a thirty-five-hundred with a gas motor in it with a dump body that we would probably be looking to replace at some point. It's getting aged, I don't know if we have it already, that might be a better suit. That would have a plow on it for him too, to be able to use, this thing's kind of.
Yeah, if this is a liability, I'd just soon get rid of it.
Right, get rid of it.
Yeah, I think I hear that, let's just, we'll move on from it.
Okay. You're good, thank you.
Any motion on that?
Yep, I move that we award the bid to Hilltop Chevrolet in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollar, and six dollars, and approve up to twenty-five thousand dollars for installation of additional equipment.
Second. Are we doing the eighty or were you doing?
That, that is the eighty.
That is, okay, great, excellent. All those in favor, five zero, perfect, thanks. Next, we will move on to discussion and action on the acceptance of an open space easement and fire suppression easement for Park Ridge subdivision. Hello, Mike.
Hello, I just, I'd like to give a quick summary on it. I know in your packet I had a memo I prepared, but these are two easements associated with a subdivision approval that occurred by year ago off of Perry Oliver and Quarry Road. I got a high, I got the location of subdivision highlighted on the GIS. And there are two easements involved. One is an open space trail easement that I highlighted in purple, the trail network that was part of the approval. And this is a case where the open space is owned by the HOA, and the town just will have an easement across their trails. So that's one of the easements that's before you for acceptance. The other one is just our standard access to the fire pond. So there's an existing fire pond on the site right now, but they're making it much larger for the subdivision. And that gives us access to the fire pond, the hydrant and the, and the road of the subdivision, so we can access it. All the maintenance responsibilities for the fire pond are, you know, the responsibility of the HOA. Our town just has an easement to be able to use it.
And that's what both the easements are for, to get in someplace, not that yellow hatched area.
Correct, well, the yellow hatched area is the open space. And the, the easement is for the public to be able to cross the open space and the road to access the trails. And the trails are in purple.
Okay, but I'm sorry, did I, I misunderstood you, I thought you said that they owned the open space easement, not us.
Correct, exactly.
Okay, all right.
But we'll have an easement.
Across it, that's okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure that's where the, all right, thank you.
Anything from the board?
I move for acceptance of the two easements.
Second, all those in favor, five zero, thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussion and action to schedule a public hearing on amendments to appendices A through G to the general assistance maximums in compliance with the state model general assistance ordinance for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. Bill.
You all are very used to seeing this every year, but, you know, the, the state basically sets the maximums and the minimums based on the data that they have, and you don't really have the latitude to change it. You have to adopt it and readminister it.
I move to schedule a public hearing on October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six P M. in the Littlefield Meeting Room, two oh eight Sanford Road, on amendments to appendices A through G to the general assistance maximums for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second, all those in favor, five zero, thank you. Next, we have a discussion and action on a request to schedule a public meeting regarding climate change. I believe we have Mr. Hardy here this evening, so you're speakers, if you go up to the podium? Yeah, absolutely, come right up here. If you want to state your name for the public, great.
Yeah, I'm Joe Hardy, living in the Tattlet section of Wells. Before I start with this agenda, I just spoke to the general in the fire department suggesting that he investigate the all-electric Ford F-150. We had two at a car show on Saturday, they are around, and I would just encourage you in the future to consider that vehicle. I don't know the costs, once you, once you get all the equipment that you want on it, but. Tonight, I appreciate being on your agenda. As you know, I've collected suggestions, I think about one hundred and thirty-three was certified by the town clerk on petitions seeking a public meeting, a meeting with you, with the board of selectmen on climate change. And so I'm here tonight for one purpose only, and that is to ask you to approve of such a meeting and to set a date for it. And I'm honestly willing to discuss it with you, answer any questions and so on. I do have suggestions about timing of such a meeting. I think I put it in one of my earlier, earlier letters, suggesting that it be held earlier or in advance of one of your regularly scheduled meetings, perhaps at five o'clock, in which your, this meeting would be set back a little bit, or having it scheduled at six o'clock, and in which case you'd set back your regular meeting to, say, seven fifteen or seven thirty. And that would mean that the public would know that you're here, you would all be here as well. Sometimes it's difficult to schedule a meeting, finding a night when people can come. But anyway, that's my proposal, so.
All right, anything from the board?
Okay, let's start. I understand what you're asking for, it's not really normally what we would do, it's not our jurisdiction. I, I guess I'm confused as to what you think the selectmen can do except to offer a public hearing for you because it's not, we don't make any decisions on climate change.
We can. There's nothing prevents you from doing that, Kathy. It's not in your history, of course, because it hasn't been an issue before the public, but you certainly can make all kinds of decisions. And my hope is that with such a meeting, a lot of people will attend with suggestions for you as to what things you could do in terms of ordinances, in terms of simply exerting leadership, making public statements, things that would be, I think, of great value to the people of this town in finding ways to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. I mean, there's a whole range of things which, you know, if you keep abreast of, of this sort of thing in the news and the media, you're familiar with. So I think it would be a great opportunity for an exchange with the board. I've been in here many times, you've listened, but there hasn't been any exchange. You're not required to, to comment on when someone makes a, a speech during the public comment period. But this would be an exchange where you could hear people, you could respond to people, they could question you. And I would do work with John or any member of the board here to make sure that such a meeting is productive, it's orderly, it's civil, and whatever you might expect, because that's how I want to operate in these, these kinds of settings.
I, I feel like we have a committee that you were a part of, you're no longer a part of, that can present that to us at any time they want, which they did with like the lights. And they did that with, with many things we've, we've voted yes on. That's the process.
Yeah, well, that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
No, but that's, that's our, that's our process, like, like any other committee, like the, you know, that, that they'd come to us with what their recommendations are, and we can hear it out that way, to have a special meeting. Now, everyone's going to want a special meeting about what they feel.
Well, I, let me say this, the Energy Committee has a very limited mandate, it really is. I mean, and you have acted as a board on many of their requests, because I was part of that process for a number of years. But we do not have a sustainability committee. We have a part-time sustainability person through Southern Main Regional Planning. But there are many, many issues that go beyond issues of, of energy. And that's why I think it would be good, and you, you never have the opportunity to hear from the public. There are some towns, I know Portsmouth to Hampshire is one of them, that have an opportunity for a two-way process during the public comment period. You don't have that here, not that you're unusual in that regard, but you don't. It's a one-way, a one-way communication most of the time.
Well, it's a different form of government.
I would, I would disagree with that assessment though, because a lot of the things that we talk about in terms of sustainability, like long-term planning for the flood maps, for recycling, actually, we just set up the waste management committee in which now we're looking into, I believe you had recommended the organization, Mr. Fox, is to look into a food waste program. And then also, we've acted on, what they call them consortiums, I believe initially, with the solar panels and solar fields to sign on to these different plans. So I, I do think that we've gathered public comment during those periods, albeit it just hasn't been structured specifically like what's being presented here today. So I just, I, I would draw issue with that statement, yes.
Well, to a degree, I mean, this, I'm not, this is true than what you're saying, but I would, I would point out again, but this is a special situation because you have more than a hundred people asking for this meeting, and that's a little unusual. And I think in this case, that request by citizens of this town should be honored, if for no other reason. Assuming that you are correct, that you've got mechanisms in place. Here is a whole large group of people that would like to have a public meeting, and I know they will turn out, and I think it will be very productive for you.
You could have public meetings though, anywhere. I've been to your sessions and listened to some of the ones that you did at, like the library and some of the presentations that you made.
But those don't involve you, Kathy. Those are simply presentations, and you, who you attend, you can make comments as you choose, but I want something where, and the people who signed this petition agreed, we want something that is, involves an exchange of ideas. So that something productive could go back and forth. And I think that it would be rewarding, rewarding to you as well as the people in this town. If you perhaps were at one of the comprehensive plan meetings, I think it was the first public forum we had out at the, the Rec area. When I mentioned climate change to be a factor in, in their deliberations, there was a huge round of applause. I mean, there are a lot of people who want you to address them in ways that you haven't. So far, you've done certain things, but I must say, those are the low-hanging fruit. That's, that's why we presented them to you, because they obviously saved the town money. I mean, whether it's solar panels, the contract, the LED light, street lighting, those all were money-making, money-saving presentations, proposals. But there are many other things that you could do that would be simply in the way of leadership, public statements, encouragement to people, and your voice would be important, and I think it would have an impact on this town, even if it didn't result in specific ordinances.
You know, I'm, I'm fine with having a meeting, I, I would suggest if we do, if we find a day, not a Tuesday night, but like a Thursday night or some night when this place is open, and that's the, that's the sole purpose of, of the meeting. Having it in conjunction with a selectmen's meeting when we have a whole host of other things to talk about makes it such that you're either rushing through or you're thinking about other things, and. So I would, I would suggest that we, if, if the rest of the board decides they want to go forward, that we find it, and I think Thursdays are generally pretty open. I don't think we have other committing, meetings that, on Thursday nights, that we find a Thursday night at six o'clock and go from six to seven thirty. I mean, the exchange of ideas, I mean, I, I suspect, you know, I'm, I'm willing to come and listen. I don't know that I have a whole lot of answers to anybody that stands up and says, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? I mean, I, you know, I'd have to see what they're talking about and, and think it through, and. I mean, I've read this, this manifesto or whatever it is that the Energy Committee put together, and I disagree with a lot of it. And so we, you know, if that's what they want to discuss, we could.
It's not, it's, I'm not representing the Energy Committee.
No, 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 I'm just saying that, I mean, a lot of the, I mean, I, I think you were on the Energy Committee when you, when this was put forward.
I probably was the author.
Sure you were, I haven't read it thoroughly, I'm sure you were. So I, I, you know, so that would be my suggestion, that I, you know, I'm happy to listen to any number of people that want to come out, and. I mean, if there's going to be a hundred and thirty, we can't do it here.
I would, I actually, I would, I would guess we might get fifty people, Bob. But fifty very interested people who want to pass on their words of wisdom to you, if you will. And, you know, maybe nothing will come of it, I, I can't promise it'll be productive, I think it will be. I think you'll just hear things from a segment of the population here that would be.
I would suggest that if we do, that we look at the Activity Center.
Could be.
Meeting room in the library. You think you could do it there?
Where?
The library, the community room.
That's big enough, right?
That's not true.
One issue I would say, you know, and certainly do whatever you want, is if you hold it as a public hearing of the board.
It would be a public meeting, not a public hearing.
Yeah, because if you hold it as a public hearing, you're, you're eventually, you're essentially going to be, you know, the targets of many, many suggestions, whereas if, if a public meeting were held and everyone attended, and you're not sitting up here fielding inquiries and questions, I think it can be a more productive meeting. Or they could have a public meeting themselves and come forward with recommendations to the board later. Just put those two things out there. You, when you act as a board, you act under state of Maine law, and there are things that apply. Not that you can't do it, but.
I mean, I would suggest that if we go forward, you call it a public forum on climate change. That doesn't, that doesn't suggest that decisions are going to be made or that, that ordinance is going to be proposed. It's just a public forum, it's a discussion.
Bob, i- i- if three or more selectmen appear, does it automatically become a, a public meeting?
Yes, I mean, we, we would have to announce it as a public meeting.
Yeah, if we advertise. Yeah, if we advertise it as a public meeting and that the board's gonna attend, then that's.
Because even if we had, if you held a public meeting and we showed up, all of us, it would automatically be.
What you can't do. You can't deliberate at that meeting based on the subject, suggestions and come to any type of decision. Um if you deliberate at all, then um you head into some murkier waters, but.
So we would just go and listen?
Well, you can talk, it's deliberating as a board on something you may act on is a problem.
I I guess. I guess I still personally have concerns, just because I have to agree with Kathy's initial statement, a lot of this stuff is just outside of our authority. I think some of it, and I I mean, I'll be frank, I think it amounts to activism, and I certainly wanna avoid activism on this board. I don't want it to turn into a political situation like we see happening around the country now, I always welcome the free flow of ideas. I mean, that's why we added this to the agenda tonight, is so we could have the discussion, so I'm not saying that I don't wanna listen to the population. But there are things that I have concerns about and I'll be upfront about, for example, signing on to a letter of emergency. I personally will never be agreeable to that, ever, under any circumstances, I don't think it's ever, we can look at science and all that, and that will give us conclusive evidence. But, or to certain things, however, when you look at history, history tells that governments that rule through emergency edicts have never worked out, so I just, I will not subscribe to that idea. Period, um and I don't wanna get anybody's hopes up that I uh personally would even consider that, there are other things that I've seen come forward. Um well, I'll just use this one for example, uh ordinances which require full compliance and new construction beginning in twenty twenty-five, which is only three years from now. Um for, you know, to provide low-cost funding options, no, I'm sorry, it's two different things, but they tied back to building permits. To discourage building if it's not tied into certain green energy codes, I don't like that idea either, I think everything's already becoming too expensive for people. Inflation has shot through the roof, fuel prices are through the roof, so I think a lot of this stuff, I don't think that we're doing anyone any favors now. I really like the way that we have done it, where we have identified these individual items and we've taken action on, for example, there's electric vehicles setting out in the parking lot. Town wells is purchased where they've been feasible, I know that the discussion has come up also within this um, this document that I have here. About fire trucks and plow trucks, but the reality is, that's just not feasible right now, the technology's not there for those lines of work, and it would. It would represent a liability to the public, so I guess. Depending on how we structure this, I'm I'm still up in the air, I don't see why the select board needs to get involved in a meeting. To gather public input on something that people might like to have, we've done it other ways in the past, where we've had questionnaires, Survey Monkey, things like that, so.
I I do, I li- I like um Bill's suggestion where they could come back with ideas that that were, that were brought forward at the meeting. And present them to us um at a, you know, at a workshop and a small thing, but, or and, you know, just in, when it's open to the public. Um that would be okay, but as far as hosting or being part of, it would be very difficult legally or whatever reason for us to. Be able to go there and not have it be a an actual meeting.
Could we just say that we're fine with providing a town space to hold this, if Mr. Hardy wanted to put this meeting together and allow him to do that?
Yeah, and we would do that no matter what, and they're they're townspeople and they can have a space, you know, we'd make, find a spot for them.
That's not what this petition called for though, John, I mean, the the call for a meeting with you. Uh I mean, may not, may, possibly not all five, but certainly a substantial number, because we wanted to have an exchange. Uh I mean, I've I've called public meetings on a number of things in the past, uh anybody could do that, you get the space and. But uh it's, it's, it's contact with you in a forum that doesn't exist right now that we're looking for. Or one-time event, and you know, I'm hoping that it will be constructive and useful to you, maybe it won't. But since quite a few people have asked for it, I don't think there's anything to be lost by granting permission for it. And see what happens, and I guarantee you, it will be, it will be a civil and orderly meeting.
I don't have any doubt that you would make sure it was that anyway, Joe, seriously, you know, but I I just, I don't see it in the. The structure of the select board and its requirements and its restrictions on how we get together for, for a uh meeting. Um the most that could be there would be two, the if there's three, it's a, it's a, an official meeting.
Alright, and and, but supposing it turns into an efficient meeting, what what is wrong with that, I mean, I don't have an objection to that. Uh what what would be the drawback to it, I mean, you maybe you have to call it to order or something, I I don't know, Bill, but. Uh I I don't think the people who are coming would mind.
I I mean, I think the the only thing, it would require us to post that we're having a public meeting for the purposes of discussion of. Climate change.
So you could do that?
Yep, uh yeah. But I mean, there would, you would, un- unlike some of the things we have, it discuss and action on, this would just be. A discussion of.
Yes.
With no.
At a separate night, on a separate, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I mean, we we can't do it tonight, cause we'd have to sign a. So we'd have to find a date, find a place, and then at the next meeting, come back and say. Here's the place, here's the time, and we make a motion to. To s- to set up a a public meeting of, on this date to do, to discuss climate change.
Cindy was here, she's still here? Uh the library, the community room's usually available, isn't it, with notice?
Um with notice.
I mean, that's what would be something Bill would have to look into tomorrow and find out what dates and what. And I would say a Thursday night is probably the better night.
You could, you know, I I guess, you know, you don't have an action item on your agenda for this, so I wouldn't. You know, but but it doesn't mean you couldn't each indicate whether or not you wanted to move forward with having a. Select person's public meeting, or if you think they should move forward with just having their own.
Well, it does say discussion and action on.
It does say action, so you, you could make a motion and then, you know, once you've all discussed what you wanna discuss, you could make a motion.
So, you know, I I have a question on this, so if, I'm trying to think of a good example before I say it, but, alright, let's just say this. The school budget meeting, right, you have a school budget meeting, and all five of us show up to the school budget meeting. That's not a selectman meeting, we're there as citizens of the town to vote on a school budget, where they're hearing and talking about it. Why can't we have another, a meeting where we just, we show up to to listen? And not have a debate, we wouldn't debate, we might debate a budget, but not as a selectman, we debated a budget as a citizen.
I think the difference there, Tim, is that that's the schools' meeting.
But this couldn't be there, like I'm just trying to get to that forum that you would, you would, like a forum. As a citizen, why can't I attend a forum, not as a selectman? But I'm a citizen of Wells still, I didn't give up my right.
Still, you're still a member of the board, if you all five were going to a meeting and I knew about it, I would ask that we advertise it.
But is this, is this meeting being set to debate policy or listen to the public, there's there's two. What what is our participation level going to be?
Why I say listen to the public?
I'm I'm not prepared to debate anything.
No, I wouldn't.
I mean, I I I'm certainly willing to listen and and take information that comes forward, to have an exchange, but. I mean, that's a, that's about.
That's all I could ask of you, Bob.
That's the extent of which I would think we would wanna participate.
Yeah, I'll, I would listen, but I'm not.
Well, it's not an appropriate venue for us to discuss policy, if it was public outreach, it's different. Well, no, let the public discuss their thoughts and just hear it, take.
But I guess if we move this forward, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we have asked Bill to look into a place and a time. To hold a public meeting, to have a discussion with the citizens um on climate change. Initiatives or action plans or whatever.
Issues.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Meeting, I don't, I guess, I, could we have more discussion, I guess.
I mean, we've got motion now, you can discuss it, we've seconded motion.
I'm sorry, I, so is this a selectman meeting, or is this?
A meeting.
It it is a meeting of the board.
When we had our forum, I believe with lodging, we had, I think the chair at the time sat at the table. We had representatives from the town government, and then the other selectmen sat off, and the meeting was held for the public. The whole.
Meetings all the time, and maybe you're there or somebody, alright.
The chair was there to run the meeting and make sure that it didn't get out of hand, and then the public was able to ask questions, which in this case, we will. Forego that because we don't know, but we could at least take the comment, that would be. The structure, I would imagine, but we'd have to discuss that further, I would imagine, and actually set that up and implement it. To just throw it together haphazardly is not going to work out well, I don't believe.
I mean, at this point, the motion's really just to have Bill look into a place in the town, when we set the public hearing or public meeting. Um we can further discuss the particulars of of that meeting.
Right, because we would have to have, we we would have to make a motion to set that here at another.
You could set it, and you could have someone else run it, or you can run it.
Alright, I get it now.
Does it make sense to have legal counsel too, just to see what your rules are would be?
Uh I think they'd be fine if they advertised.
No, because it's really just, it's it's for the.
It's illegal.
I mean, right now, it's just a matter of setting up a place and a time.
Yeah.
And then when it comes back to us the next meeting, we can further discuss the particulars of. How we wanted to run, how, you know, who's gonna run the meeting, how that's all gonna work out.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor, there's a second, some vote, all those in favor? Post, pose for one.
I'll set it up and let you know.
Okay.
So then I could come back at that meeting when you put it on the agenda after you found a place?
Yeah, I expect it to be the next meeting.
Okay, right, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Moving on, we have a discussion and action on ambulance purchase for Wells Emergency Medical Services. Steve? Oh, and we have a representative also from the WEMS board, if both of you wanted to pull a chair up here, actually, that'd be good. Yeah, so we put a face, face with the name. That'd be great.
Yeah, you have to share that chair.
No, you can, just grab another one, another one right there. Well, I just figured it'd be good, sit down and I'm glad, Tim, I'm glad that you were able to make it out, just. New, sort of relatively new to the board, so. Steve, if you wanna bring us up to date on the.
My name's Steve Merrill, I'm the interim director for uh Wells EMS. Um as you know, the uh past budget would, should say the fiscal year budget now has passed for. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for Wells EMS for an ambulance. Um as you are also aware, the increase in prices for steel, wood and so forth. Have skyrocketed, um so this has made it hard for um Wells EMS to actually sit and. Try to budget and cut little odds and ends out of the ambulance and so forth. Um so originally, uh in January twenty twenty-two, uh. The price was quoted to us for two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two ninety-four, um there was no action done on it until. Um the actual approved budget of fiscal year, um and we just went back out. Just to make sure we were all set and price-wise, um and it was an increase of six thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars just for the ambulance. Um so that gave, you know, it's two point five five percent increase, um so we're going to be way over. Well, that's not really a lot over, but it is enough to um make an impact on the um budget. Uh some other items that were not um put into that, uh were retrofitting stretches to actually fit the new ambulance, and also. Uh radio work with installation of radios, um due to interoperability over the years after nine eleven and so forth. Um so we're coming back uh to the board to see if we can get um some contingency funds to uh purchase our new ambulance. So uh you do have the paperwork in front of you, um so we're coming back to the board for an additional. Twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents to purchase new ambulances.
I didn't see anything in here about any trade-in values or anything.
So I have actually some paperwork here, um trade-in value on the ambulance that we're getting rid of, or we'd like to trade in. Is a two thousand thirteen Ford E four fifty, uh trade-in basically is only six thousand dollars. Which is pretty much average, um with the type of ambulance we're trading in.
Would it be something that we could sell outright, possibly or?
There's always a chance, um but I can't say yes or no if you would.
Didn't you do what the fire department did and put it into that, I don't know what it's called?
Yeah, it's called Ridley Mountain, I don't know if they sell one of those, I could look.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could put it out there and and, I mean, what's the other, the government website that they also do? I know Kenny.
I know there's one, but I can't think of the name.
I know Kenny Bunk did one, a couple of fire trucks and ambulances and so forth, um so we could also look into that. So Ford also did give us a uh, a concession, which is a fleet concession as well, which that was only thirty-eight hundred dollars. So. So I have.
How much was the warrant article, was it one article, two sixty?
Jody, do you know?
It was two hundred and sixty.
So I don't think, we, I mean, we, we don't have discretion to add. Any more money to it, I mean, that's what the bonus voted on.
You don't deny, you know, you, you have your um fund, but it's tiny, um.
Yeah.
Jody, thoughts? I I hadn't reviewed this.
Off the top of my head, I don't remember, and maybe I gave Steve the amount of what is in fund. After we take out two hundred and sixty thousand, but I believe you have the power in the purchasing policy if it's under a hundred thousand. To hold public hearing to release more funds.
Out of?
Out, if if there's money in that reserve fund, yeah, I could run down and just make sure, I just, off the top of my head tonight.
I mean, we'd have to know how much is in there, cause we couldn't just take it out of.
Right.
Now surplus, I mean, we'd have to come out of that account.
Right, and I can run down and get that number for you, I just don't know it off the top of my head right now.
I think that's wise, it won't take.
We'd have to know.
Yeah.
If we're gonna take action tonight, we need to know.
Yeah, cause we'd have to make a motion to set a public hearing to do such and so.
Yeah, let me go get you that number.
Ridley Mountain does sell ambulances, used ambulances.
And this came up, this was, I had asked Bill to put this on last minute, we had our WEMS meeting last week, and the first one since the summer recess. This issue came up and and um obviously, as we know, uh when you get a price, sometimes. Vendor's not able to hold that price for a long time, so getting the bureaucratic process out of the way seems to be the thing to do, so.
Whereas we don't have anything here tonight for public hearing.
You really, I don't know, if you can't hold a public hearing with no notice?
I mean, I think we'd have to.
No, we have to, I would, we would make a motion to set a public hearing.
And then have the big one drawn up either tomorrow or Thursday, and then we can come in and sign after the fact.
Well, you have to hold the public hearing, which would be on the, what's today, the twentieth?
Yeah, he's talking about the announcement, the actual, you know, we have to sign the public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
So we can make the motion and just sam- sign it later.
Yes, sign it tomorrow, yeah.
For October fourth.
Yes.
Right.
That would, that would be the fastest way.
So can we table this item until the, she comes back?
She'll be back in two minutes, you can table it if you want.
It was like momentum.
Bob's thinking dinner.
Get out of work at four thirty, and you run up here.
Right, I know, you can't, I know, that's a, you know, you try to grab a couple of crackers with a tuna fish.
That peach I had on the drive didn't really.
You know, budgeting for big equipment like this is very difficult to do, it is, and especially in this atmosphere. And then, you know, they're not, it's not just a piece of equipment, then the s- the stretchers they put on them these days. Hydraulic stretchers or whatever, it's not, it's not, it's like it used to be.
I just think it's funny that the increase of eight point three nine percent is exactly what they determined there, that the um.
Inflation was.
Inflation has been, you know, that's pretty much apropos.
They have three hundred and forty thousand one seventy-five and eighty-five cents, so.
Uncommitted.
Uncommitted, yeah.
Okay, so. Yeah, do we have a motion to set a public hearing?
Yep, um twenty month, I just wanna get the money, right, sixteen thirty-eight, I moved to schedule. I move to schedule a public hearing to release and expend twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents from, and is there a number? Or it doesn't matter, from the, what's it, what's it called?
We'll, we'll give.
From the ambulance reserve fund for October fourth, six P M in the Littlefield Room at two oh eight Sanford Road.
Can you also, could you also add in there?
What?
Discussion.
Plus.
And authorize them to put it out to bid on that surplus website?
All the old ambulance.
Okay, and and uh, okay, and to, and to include the um.
Authorize the sale of.
This, authorizing the sale of the old ambulance, if that would be replacing.
Alright, uh, just to let you know, right now, there's no twenty twenty-three chassis. We're waiting, it could be another year. So.
But you can, you can put the contract in now and it would hold it, right?
Yep.
For that price, okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thanks, Steve, thanks, Tim.
See you in two weeks, yes.
Moving on, next we have discussion and action on a letter of intent for the formation of a quasi municipal dredging authority. Bill.
I'll, I'll briefly outline it, cause you have more detail.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
But it's been, uh, apparently it's been the goal of uh former town managers and boards that we moved to, it's having a uh. Under the county uh government, the formation of a quasi municipal dredging authority. And that seems to be mov- moving forward and I'll turn it over to.
Yeah, thank you, I've been in touch with the folks in Saco, uh SOS Saco Bay, who's been leading this charge and. The uh county government, as you know, we discussed this last spring, um, had discussed the possibility of. Using federal funds to purchase a dredge machine for the towns of Southern Maine and Southern, uh, Cumberland County. Um, and to form it, to buy it and then to form this um organization to then run or manage the operation and. The, the, as I understand it, uh, and the folks are here from uh Saco, um, as I understand it, the county commissioners are getting ready to vote to do that. And they want this authority to be set up, and this basically says that the town of Wells, it's our intent to approve and set up and participate. In the organization of this um quasi municipal organization. And Mr. Roach can probably explain a little more.
First of all, he's got a great name, so.
Not only a great name, great spelling of the last name, and my only sibling is Timothy Roach, so, so.
I vote yes.
But no insight, yeah, no, sorry. Uh, everything uh, uh, Selectman Foley just said is uh, is is accurate, um. The vote is uh coming up for the county, we believe on their second vote in October, with second meeting in October, which is um October nineteenth. So uh they had instructed us to do basically three things. One was to um, uh, get the bid out and see if a bid came in at the one point eight million, which. Uh, we, we did get that, the support boat was a little bit higher, but now we have the support boat lower. Which we believe it will be under the one point eight million in total for the dredge and a support boat. The second thing they asked is that Saco um had fronted the, what we call the setup costs, uh, yes, it starts the operations if you can really get it in the water next. For next season, but um, but Saco did pass that in May with their ARPA funds to uh half-year um setup and and host the dredge. Uh, and the third thing is what is uh before you tonight, um, is the dredge authority, uh, we had set up, we're a volunteer organization. I- issue advocacy for our shorelines, SOS Saco Bay, but we did first file with the state, the Southern Maine Dredge Authority. Uh, just to get it filed in and then uh come up some bylaws, but also this uh, um, a setup where communities can. Can be uh on the, on the, on the leading, the lead into uh being, making decisions for the dredge. No, uh, but as a former council myself, uh, there is no, this still is not a cost vote, right? This is not, you're not pledging any funds with this letter of intent. Um, we actually, actually personally sat down with the city attorney of Saco to make sure that that was not, that not the case, um. And whether, um, you know, who, who is, uh, there's a vote needed to sign or what have you, so. So our goal is, there's a little bit of chicken and egg here going on, because you don't have anything to be authority over until we get the dredge, so we need the. The county commissioners to vote for the dredge and bring it in, and then there's something to oversight and manage, we, we do believe that the state. Um, at least our state senator, once the elections are done November and and the, and the sessions start in January, that an actual commission can be formed and um. And the participating communities will have a vote and and uh o- over the dredger operations, but. Uh, and that said, again, no, no cost commitment now, um, but if you do want dredge work, of course, we think that being part of the authority will. Get you on the schedule and also uh discounting or or what have you, and we also think that the Army Corps themselves will, with all the work that has to be done, will actually have demand on this dredge as well, so. Open any questions, a lot of stuff there, but um, but in the end, this is just a, a letter of intent to support, uh, you know, being part of the dredge authority.
No, you answered my question right away.
Seems like a no brainer.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea, we've talked, I mean, years and years ago, we talked about getting a dredge and having the coastal towns be able to utilize it. So it can continually get sand out into our system, um, and it just works out that the county government has the funds and they're willing to spend them, and I just. I think it's a great opportunity, and as I understand it, if Wells wanted a position on this commission or this dredge authority, that. We would have an opportunity to have a person participate, um, and so I, I, I mean, I just, I, I think it's the next step that needs to go forward and and I would urge us to. To support it and 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 pass this and move forward.
Yeah, I, I like the idea.
Sounds good.
Ready?
Yes, uh, any other discussion from the board before we take a motion? Nope, seeing none, Kathy.
I move to approve the letter of intent and authorize the town manager to sign the letter.
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you, Mr. Roach for coming out.
And thank you, thank you very much, and thank to your harbor master as well, and look forward to hopefully working with you in the future, thanks.
Likewise, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next up, we have discussion and action to accept donations and requests. First, we have a two hundred dollar donation from Eleanor Andrews and William Andrews to the Town of Wells for the Fuel Assistance Program Fund. Fifty-one dollars from various library users to the Wells Public Library. We have two thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars uh for a donation from the friends supporting the Wells Public Library to the Wells Public Library. For our third quarter programming budget. And we have a four hundred and fifty dollar donation from Wells Branch Fire Association to the Town of Wells for the Fuel Assistance Program Fund. And we have a five hundred and nineteen dollar and fourteen cent donation from various donors to the Harbor Shellfish Lab.
I move to accept the generous donations and write a letter of thanks to the donors.
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero, excellent, thank you. Next, we have a discussion and action on approving minutes of the September sixth, two thousand twenty-two Selectman's Meeting, everything looked good.
I move for approval of the September sixth, twenty twenty-two Selectman Meeting Minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero, thank you. Next, we have open to the public, uh, second time this evening for ten minutes, we have a period set aside for public comment, anybody can probably like to comment at this time. Seeing none, move on to good news.
I have an item for good news, um, the Wells Energy Advisor Committee hosted the electric vehicle show at the library on September eleventh. There were more than twenty fully electric vehicles on display, including cars, pickup trucks, bicycles, a commercial van and a car specially modified for municipal use by kind of on fire chief. They estimated that the show was attended by more than three hundred people, um, the show was a real success and several of the participants had a vigorous and harsh show they attended this year.
Nice, thank you.
Nice.
I also have the chief, I, I had uh the chief that was gonna do something under the manager's report, I think it's good to get the word out. I, I'm gonna let you do it if you don't mind, yeah, I don't know enough about it, but. I, this is uh, the beginning of, of a new effort to um. Try to get the word out about these other services that are available and we'll have Rebecca get involved in this as well, as, as when the chief's ready to roll this out.
I have some answers there, if you wanna hand it out, if you guys sit, look at this and have some other suggestions, what we call it is a help card, it's, it will be half the size. We've been using them, however, unfortunately, numbers change, so we knew a number was gonna change, it, um, so we have made that change on here. Um, it's the uh, the main crisis hotline has gone to a three-digit. We had the um. Nine-digit out there, ten-digit out there. So we are gonna start reprinting these, the first ones, we only printed very few, we're gonna print up some more of these. Um, I know the officers use them frequently, we've run out of them already for the ones we had. So if you look at the back there, there are some different organizations, if there's, I ran this by um our H R consultant. She had come up with one, we, we were already covered in that area, but, so I'm trying to get, I don't have to reprint this, you know, and change it time and time again. So, once we get this, um, uh, we're gonna look at possibly partnering with a, a, a local civic organization to get some posters done up. To uh, maybe even get the school involved in in some of this, cause I think, eh, what it does is it allows, especially when you get the posters up. Someone doesn't have to ask somebody for a number. They can take a picture of it with their phone, they got it with them all the time. Uh, so we will do, uh, deal with some of the local um businesses and whatever, and, but this is. Something we've had for a while and it's got the Q R code that works, uh, so those kids can do that with their phones. And, you know, people get embarrassed when they wanna reach out for help, and we think it's important, um. To have it readily available, eh, cause it, and again, you can always call two one one if you don't know. And that's why we included two one one on here, if there's something on here you're not sure it's the right number, call two one one, they'll find you the right number. And don't be afraid to ask. But it, this makes it so they don't have to ask, but we do hand this out, we've uh been to, whether it's domestics or other different, um. Different things that are on here, we've also uh come up with another brochure that we will make, is readily available. It's legal resources, and it's free or reduced, uh, cause a lot of times we get called to calls that were, are civil. And, you know, we hate to say, you know, as they say, ten eight civil, nothing we can do, here's, here's a resource. Um, and we don't handle, try not to handle civil as best, as much as possible, but at least it gives them something, it gives them hope that the. Or gives them a number to call, a person to talk to, anything like that, you know, unfortunately, sometimes we're, you know, we're too late for some people. But we need to put that effort out there, so.
If I could jump in.
Sure.
Basically lays out phone numbers that people can call for many different circumstances, child abuse, certainly elder abuse is something we're trying to focus more on. Uh, the main crisis hotline, suicide prevention, veteran crisis hotline, poison control. These are things that sometimes I think, what we're, what we think is that people don't even know that these assets are available. And so their first option is to call nine one one, and so we're, we're prepared to then tell them, look, here's, here's who could help you. But we're gonna put this on the webpage and we'll put it on Facebook and um, try to get the word out again in renewed effort. And the chief does this every once in a while anyway, but there are people, and like she said, if you don't know who to call, call two one one. And they specialize in telling you how to get to whatever services you need.
Yeah, and you will see a, uh, an effort right now is out there from the uh U S Attorney's Department's office, Darcy McElwee is uh doing elder abuse. You will see some P S As on that, we're trying to get some of that out there, that's, and again, you know, a lot of people, again, call, it's not always physical. It can be financial, it can be many different things, and always, you know, domestic abuse isn't always physical. It's, you know, it's, it could be m- mental abuse, you know, whatever, so. This is resources, and if you guys look at that, you can think of something else you want us to look into to possibly add, let me know.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, because of the fentanyl that, fentanyl that's been coming up, you know, with the, the rainbow colors and all those other things that, for kids, it's so frightening.
For kids.
Um, is there a P S A or something that you've been doing for that?
Um, I know the U S Attorney's has been working on, they've, they're the ones with all the money, so, um. So they've been doing quite a few, they've got, they've done two on the elder abuse, I can, uh, I'll, I'll call her, um. Actually, the, the main chiefs have a liaison, her name's Heather Putnam, for the, for the U S Attorney's Office, and then they wanna get involved in all this stuff. They do, um, so, that's a good one, and then. That at the bottom is for options, and I think you'll see options as overdose prevention through intensive outreach and the lock zone and safety.
So if they, if they, if they saw somebody with something like that, they just wanted to tell somebody that somebody, you know, that they saw.
They could call them or call the police department.
Okay.
Or we do have the anonymous lines, people can leave the tips.
Thank you.
So, thank you. You're right, they are targeting children.
Yeah.
That's sad.
I know.
Hmm, very sad.
I don't have a clue what the cost would be, but could this be formatted onto like a refrigerator magnet?
I know.
That way it doesn't get shoved in the trash someplace?
That's possible, and that's why we wanna do the posters too, to get them, you know, put one up at the school, put one in, in, in a store, put one at the, at the trailblazers, put one at the senior center.
I like the fridge, fridge magnet, let's see if we, we can do about that, that's, cause that's right everybody's facing their home.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea. No, that's a good idea, I hadn't, I hadn't thought of that one, yeah, and we have a great printer that we work with.
For really for the football, wasn't it?
That's right. Tim's face and then the.
Tim's face in the.
That's who you get when you call two one one.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Anything else from the board?
Just a couple of things school-wise, just so everybody knows that, eh, you know, homecoming week this week, so Friday night, we scheduled a very easy opponent, so that uh. Eleven, it might be a little bit tougher than we thought, but uh, we have eleven, seven o'clock, the parade's at six, uh, you know, and, and it's a good night, and, and I joke about that, but it's a good night. Um, and homecoming week started off with a bang last night, the girls' soccer team beat York one zip, which is a huge win for the girls' soccer, I, it's very. Rare we beat them in soccer and and stuff like that, so it's a, that's a great win, uh, and, you know, we're off to a good start, three and O in football and. And then, uh, just wanna, uh. We had a bunch of open houses that, you know, we're back, the school's back, open houses where parents could have come and all that stuff, but I also wanna say, just to put on the radar veterans, uh. The football team always does a very large, uh, the largest in the state, and a, a veterans event, and we will be October seventh. Uh, will be our day, and if you wanna be a part of it, just, there's gonna be flyers and stuff out there, you can contact me or my wife. Uh, and at the school and and we'll help you, direct you to be a part of our veterans night, which is a great night for us, like, it's a, it's awesome, so.
Good news. Um, I wanna, I wanna say that the Wells Agunkwa Senior Center and the Wells Warriors Football Golf Tournament together raised, um, well, for the center, sixty-six hundred dollars. And we will be presenting a check to the um football team the night of the veterans for the veterans on the flights, which is what the um, the Wells. Warriors Football Team wanted to raise it for, so, thank you to all our sponsors, thank you to everyone who participated, thank you to Tim. And um, and thank you to the Wells uh Warriors Football Team and all the many uh volunteers we had from the senior center that made it so successful, thank you.
One more thing, Joe, sorry, if anybody wants to not hear Kathy speak. Saturday morning after the homecoming game, you just wanna go to replace a business or a house. We hear all Friday night and by, we know that by Saturday morning, she must be very hoarse.
I know, that's true, I had a friend that saw me after the game that um, that at, at Freeport and said, oh, I knew you were there, I could hear you.
Well, anything else? Well, seeing none, uh, we have, uh, next is adjournment, we have a motion.
I have a mo- I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero, thank you, everybody, for coming out, and now we will see you on the uh October fourth meeting, thank you.
I will be presenting.